All right, here. Just wait. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't do video. Do you want video? You want them to be able to see you?
Yeah.
Is this it?
Well, it's just a lady who's running it, but.
I hear you. How are you, Nancy?
Oh, good.
Oh, hi. Sorry.
Uh, how are you?
Do video or no video?
Whatever your preference is.
It's the video. I want to see them.
It's recorded. Whatever your preference is.
Sorry.
Yes, immediately.
No, you've got five minutes.
Oh, all right.
All right. So all I have to do is sit here and talk, right? I don't have to push any buttons. So here, you're going to mute it now so she, so that they can't hear you.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, Peter. Hi, Mark. How are you?
Hi, Melissa.
How are you?
I'm good.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, Melissa.
How are you?
Well, still standing after the windstorm. Been out working in this wind all day. It's really. The year of March winds.
Somebody's water is running.
It'd be my fish tank, probably.
Hi, Judy.
I'll find the.
So Peter, luckily, my trees that came down were just in my yard.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Brian.
Hi, Brian.
How's everybody doing?
Hey.
You okay? James may be a few minutes late.
Judy, your cat's actually awake. What's going on?
I guess she hears noise.
It's a cutie.
She is. She gets sweeter with every year that passes.
Can you remind me of her name, please?
Opal.
Opal. Nice.
Because she has a lot of colors. She's a tortoise, tortoiseshell tabby. So she has orange patches on brown stripes.
Got it. Yeah, we're talking about you.
She's nice. Hey, Ingrid.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Thanks.
We're just waiting for a few more board members.
Let's see Connor. So I think we have a forum.
You're so on top of things, Brian.
Not really.
I'm bringing up ArcGIS in case we need it. I think we probably want it for the discussion of CEAs.
Thank you, Judy.
Do I disappear when I'm working on another program?
I don't think until you hit that screen share.
Yeah.
John's coming.
Hello.
There's John.
Hi, John.
Hello, Peter.
All right.
We're rocking and rolling.
We are. We have a quorum. So it is now a little after seven. And I would like to call to order the regular Zoom meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for March 4th, 2021. We have a quorum, as I said. Do you have any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
Um. There was one thing. Hang on. It's been a busy day. Oh, I never received it. Mark had emailed me about something, but I never received it. So they can take care of that later. Sorry. I knew there was something. No, it, no.
So, under communications and announcements, we have a flyer and an email from Ulster County regarding the agricultural districts. And, and the idea of this is that they would like to get people who have agricultural land to register it so that we can preserve agricultural lands in case we ever have to grow our own food. It won't all be developed. So that's the idea there. Then we have, excuse me?
One of the NRI layers is quality of agricultural land.
Yep, yep. Woodstock only has two ag properties at the moment. All right. So now we have an email from the supervisor regarding the fill law. And this is sort of in response to Stuart's letter that the planning board sent back to the supervisor. And he wrote an email back. And so we have the proposed law and we have a Matt Rudikoff's comments on it. So what I would like to suggest, Melissa, if we could set a time in our next meeting to actually go through the complete law, make whatever changes or parts that the planning board feels is correct, and get it back to the town board so they can move along with it.
You got it.
Okay, so we'll set up, you know, 10, 15 minutes, 20 minutes. Whenever you can do that. Great. Okay, now, of course, we have an email containing a letter from Wayne Thompson, which is the lawyer for Nancy Schuffler, which is the, the, uh, the property adjoining the case we have before us. And then we have an email from Cornell Cooperative relating to possible training, which is all regarding flood, flood insurance, flood plain mapping and, and understanding all that goes behind that. So anybody that wants to look at that, they certainly can.
Be interesting seeing that.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of information in there, all regarding flood plains and, and insurance, flood insurances and so on. So, uh, under scheduled business, we have a public hearing. And then we have the, the discussion on critical environmental areas. And at the end, we have several motions to draft resolutions and to approve credits. And then, of course, our favorite SDR resolutions at the end of the meeting. So it is now 7:05 and we have scheduled a public hearing. And that is for 105109 Mill Hill Road LLC Especially Use Permit 21-0162D. And this is a virtual public hearing for a site plan review application for a site plan modification to existing site plan to operate a sushi restaurant in the R1.5 zoning district located at 105109 Mill Hill Road and is represented by David Fletcher. So, um, before I open the, or, um, have the meeting open to the public, I just want to mention that uh, this came as a referral to the planning board from the zoning enforcement officer. And it just simply is saying that this is to the proposals to operate a sushi takeout delivery restaurant in an existing accessory barn of the casino restaurant. And the reason for the referral is this is a modification to a site plan regarding hours of operation and required parking. So entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Agreed.
Your second? On favor? Okay, so, um, is there anybody in the public, in the meeting, uh, that wants to address this application? Okay.
Attorney Wayne Thompson here, sir.
Right. Hi, Wayne. Okay, um, so as I just said, this is a existing accessory apartment, accessory or use to the casino restaurant. It is already permitted as a banquet, wedding venue with kitchen and so on, accessory to the casino. I know in your letter, you mentioned that it's a residential zoning. Yes, it is. That building and restaurant has been operating for a little over 100 years.
It is.
So this is long before zoning. Uh, that's one of the oldest buildings in, in town. So the issue here is that this is a takeout and therefore the parking has not really changed from what it would have been as a event barn, because that was a lot more parking. And, um, if the, is the applicant here, by the way, in, in the meeting?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, David.
David's here, Nancy's here, Mark's here, Gianni's here. We got the whole crew.
Okay, so in answer to the zoning enforcement officer's question, um, what would be the hours of operation?
What are you asking, Peter?
I'm asking David Fletcher, what, what is hours of operat-, what proposed hours of operation are.
So we're thinking it'll open up around 1 o'clock and it won't close any later than, uh, than Kachina. So it's, it, it's going to be within, uh, that timeframe as far as when, like how late it's open.
Okay. The issue of parking, as I said, the parking was permitted for the event barn. And since you are doing a takeout and there is no interior seating or interior dining, parking requirement is a lot less. We have asked however, that should this ever change from takeout to sit in to dining within, that we would want to review the parking and, and do a complete parking review, site plan review of the parking. It's not necessary now, but only if the operation changes.
May I comment, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
Wayne Thompson representing Nancy Schaffler. At, at the outset, this is not in the residential zone. This is in the gateway overlay district. The gateway overlay district specifically excludes takeout by your own zoning code. And, uh, this was not a takeout prior to this. This was a, a cultural facility which was allowed to have food service ancillary to the cultural facility. And therefore, because it is in the overlay district and the overlay district was specifically formed and the findings written in the code itself say that no takeout is to be allowed. It's very explicit. It isn't waffled. It isn't possibly. It isn't maybe. It is very direct saying that no takeout is allowed because of its location within the gateway district. The gateway district was formed to prevent the traffic, uh, flow from becoming such that the pedestrian entryway, traffic flow onto the intersection that a bus stop property would not be impeded by takeout restaurants. So in order to get to where you are, which is quite possible, though probably difficult, a use variance would be required under your own zoning code because of its being lying within the gateway overlay district. And that district is clear in, in the way the legislative intent is spelled out, that this type of use is prohibited.
Okay, just one second. You have to understand that this was referred to as by the zoning enforcement officer. So this is referred to as, as that.
I, I understand very, where it came from. That doesn't, that doesn't change the reading of the code. The code is clear. I laid it out in my letter. The code is very, quite clear that takeout restaurants are prohibited in the gateway overlay district. I don't know how you can get around that without a use variance from the ZBA. That use is prohibited. So therefore, the planning board shouldn't be entertaining the application until there's a use variance granted by the ZBA.
Well, just for your information, just so you know, for the last year, we've been doing takeout throughout town. So I just want you to know that.
I, I understand things have been going through with the pandemic, doesn't, doesn't change the permanent overlay district. So while there may be some temporary measures put in place to accommodate COVID, it is not a permanent, uh, part of the zoning code at this point in time. So as this would, is intended to be a permanent facility, then you would have to go and look toward the code and the way the code is written. And it couldn't be any more clear in, in the code. The way that it was written was to prohibit takeout because of the intersection, the, the confluence of traffic and pedestrians using that area, that corridor, which was identified as being one that required this overlay district. And that would be a matter for the zoning board of appeals to determine if that use would be granted by the ZBA. And that would require a use variance.
May I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, yes. Uh, are there any other? Are there any takeout businesses in the gateway overlay district now?
No, the, the, the real issue of the code was we wanted to prevent what they call drive-through. And we wanted to prevent drive-through restaurants, which McDonald's and.
Right, I reme-, right.
That's what the code was basically trying to do.
Correct. I, I remember that. But, um, is there anyone in that district now, um, who does takeout?
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. All the, all, all those little restaurants along this grid. Of course, right now, everybody is.
But even before, before the COVID, were there?
Most restaurants in town, you can order food to take out. I mean, it, it, most restaurants.
So there has been takeout from restaurants in that district with no serious issues.
Right, a pizza, look at the pizza place.
That's not in the gateway.
Not the district, Peter.
What about?
Okay.
What about, um, there's a.
What about Nana's Creative Cafe?
Nana's Creative, yeah, Nana's Cafe. I believe that's in the, this district.
Um, John, Lava, can I get your input here?
I, I don't know if Nana's is or isn't. I haven't, I don't have a map in front of me.
I'm trying to find my copy of the map. It was sent to me. Irrespective of, of those issues, those applications are not before the planning board right now. And if they're in non-compliance, that's of no moment for, for this application. This application clearly violates the zoning code as it is written.
Okay, um.
Peter, this is Brian. Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Brian.
Uh, Wayne, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name. I'm looking at the screen, so I just see Wayne.
Uh, Thompson, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a underlying issue here besides takeout with your client?
I haven't discussed any other underlying issues other than I was, I was retained to look at the zoning code and the applicability of the zoning code to this project. And in my opinion, professional opinion as an attorney familiar with land use, having written comprehensive plan for the town of Poughkeepsie and, and worked on other zoning issues throughout law school, this project clearly violates the, the zoning code. A use variance is required. That, that's clear. It, it, it couldn't be any more clear in the zoning code. It, it's not any ambiguity in it whatsoever. It's a, if it lies within the district, no takeout. Now, the intent that you talk about McDonald's or whatever, however well those memories are, that's not what the code says. If, if you wanted to change and correct that, then you should go back and change your zoning code and, and revisit that. But at this point, I, I stand by my conclusion that the zoning code forbids this application.
But if. I'll defer to, uh, I'll defer to Stuart, please.
Yes, Stuart, please, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to ask a question of, of the attorney. Do you see any significance if there's been a restaurant, uh, use at this property for decades, as our chairman suggests? Does that affect your opinion at all in terms of the use, in terms of pre-existing use? What's your assessment on that?
My assessment on that is that it was a restaurant use that was expanded to a cult, a, a facility that was deemed a cultural facility. That such expansion is permitted under the code so long as it didn't meet the 25% additional area, which it is. Now, that, that additional area that they were granted, all that area is now used up. That, that good graces of, uh, the 25% additional area for the restaurant, which was a, uh, use contiguous to a cultural use facility, was allowed. That is specifically allowed under the code.
Right, so you're.
Written right into your code. What is not allowed is a takeout facility. That's not allowed. So now you've converted from a restaurant to a takeout. That is a different use. It is no longer an ancillary use to the cultural facility because the zoning code forbids it. The zoning code specifies that the restaurant would be for use during events of the cultural facility, not a sushi takeout facility. There, there is, it's very specific, very explicit. And, and this application violates your zoning code.
Mr. Thompson, let me focus on, my question's narrower than that. So is it your position, that the prior, prior use was, uh, that was predated the code was limited to the Kachina building rather than the barn? And then it was expanded to the barn, uh, when they made this connection to the playhouse?
When they made the connection to the playhouse, it was under the zoning code as an, as ancillary to the use of a cultural facilities. That was what was allowed under the code. Now, subsequent to the, subsequent to the adoption of the, of the overlay district, all, all change of uses would require compliance with the overlay district. So what we're not talking about here is the history. We're talking about the current application.
Thank you. But I just want to get from my own understanding, is it your explanation that, um, uh, there was no pre-code use of the barn for any kind of restaurant before the code was enacted?
I have not researched that, but if you want me to, I would. But at this point, my understanding from what is in place is the playhouse is a cultural use facility, a facility permitted under the gateway overlay district. That use was expanded to include the restaurant. At, at such point, I believe in 2011, 2012 timeframe, I'm not 100% sure about that date. That was a 25% uh, expansion of the 8,000 feet of, of the, of the playhouse that, that was allowed. So that, that use, that ancillary use to the cultural facility, when it had cultural events as a restaurant, was a permitted use with that, with that 25% expansion. events as a restaurant, was a permitted use with that with that 25% expansion of the primary structure.
And you're saying the primary structure from what you're describing is the Playhouse?
Correct.
Right, okay, I'm see, I misunderstood. I'm glad you you cleared that up, because
Okay, Wayne, just a minute, Wayne. Um, I'd like to consult with the board. I think at this point, we need to go to the zoning enforcement officer and get a uh, ruling on this.
I have the map, by the way, and it does include, probably includes some of those shops like Nancy's.
So I I think, and and John Laval or anybody else want to chip in, I I think we need to go to the CEO and get um, a uh, clarification.
I agree.
I can
Can I ask a question, please?
Go ahead.
I I assume in the code, there's nothing that specifically restricts the operation of a delivery only facility, not takeout. That's, I'm sure that's the case.
What's the difference?
What's that?
The language that
What's the difference?
We're talking about, I'm sorry, real quick, the language we're talking about in two six is 26067 F uh, subsection 1B, it looks like, where it says retail and or restaurant uses directly related to incidental to and in support of a cultural facility, but not including, this is the important part, but not including sales of food to be consumed off the premises, is what the language says.
So I I agree, I I think we got to get a um, a determination from the CEO. I and I just, for the planning board's sake, I would just like to mention that um, the neighbor, Nancy Scholfer, who is the um, adjoining neighbor, um, bought bought that property. At the time she bought the property, she bought the property next to the two biggest businesses in town, which was back then Deaney's and the Playhouse. And she she borders both of those properties. And she's already sued us once over parking for the casino. So this is not just a question of code, this is a question of a neighbor who happens to own land next to one of the biggest commercial industries in our town and is unhappy with it.
I I would I would I would have to disagree with that statement because just because it's the biggest business in the town and just because she's a neighbor, doesn't necessarily uh, grant the right to the property owner to violate this the zoning code. So if 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 we're gonna be, if we're gonna be at that point, then we just see the zoning code, what it says. I agree that you need to get a an opinion. I think
Wayne, Wayne, we're we're not, we're a volunteer planning board, we're not lawyers. I am going to suggest we go to the CEO, and if we don't, beyond that, we will have to get our own land use attorney, okay?
May I address some issues? May I address the zoning uh, districts for a minute? May I have the floor for a minute? That's Nancy Schoffler. May I have the floor for uh, ask 60 seconds to speak?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, there are um, three districts that apply to the uh, the property in question. It is residential, it is also overlay, and it is handled historical. And someone raised the question last time, why is this considered residential? It doesn't make sense. And so I emailed Ed Sanders, who was on the committee that drew up the zoning regulations in the 18, in the 1980s. And he said that that was done intentionally to um, to basically triple the protection of this property that is the two most beautiful buildings in Woodstock, the gateway to Woodstock. And the idea was uh, in addition to the traffic that my attorney mentioned, that it not be overly commercial or developed. So it so there are three uh, districts that apply.
Okay, I get it. So here's where we are, because we can't get into a legal situation here. If there's a legal legal question about this, then it has to go back to the CEO and then our own attorney would be involved, because I can't answer those questions.
Peter, may I ask one more question, please?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Thompson, how long, and your client is again, please? I'm sorry?
Nancy Schoffler.
Okay. And how long has Ms. Schuster lived in in her place?
That would that would be a question that you should ask her, sir.
Since 2008, and it was already Cucina in 2008.
Okay, so you've lived there since 2008?
Yeah. And Adler's bought the property, I believe in 2002, long after these restrictive districts were set up to protect the gateway to Woodstock. So they can't just complain that they can't do whatever the heck they want in the property.
Okay, so just I'm just curious for clarification. I mean, you knew when you bought your property that you bought it next to these entities and properties, correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's buyer beware. What did you think was going to happen?
But excuse me, that that doesn't forgive anyone from following the zoning code.
Mr. Thompson, if I want you, if I address the question to you, then I would ask you. So I ask you to please refrain from talking. I ask you to please refrain from talking.
Point of order.
Answer the question.
Okay, I I I can answer the question now, thank you. Um, when I bought the property, the barn was um, a plumbing supply store. And I um, so no, I did not know it would be a restaurant. Um, and also the the land between my house and the parking lot was dense vegetation. And the planning board resolution that allowed a restaurant takeout cultural catering facility to be in the red barn specified that the existing foliage should remain. And that and uh, Nancy Adler has taken out the foliage. So I certainly did not expect that. I did not expect um, a parking lot to be expanded.
I'd like to, I'd like to say something.
If I may ask one more question, please, and then you can. So so do you, do you think there could be a compromise here?
Um, I, yeah, and yes, as my attorney said, through the uh, uh, what it is special use application, sure, there's a there's a procedure for doing this. Um, but but I did buy a house in a residential zone with a lot of vegetation between me and these two buildings. And now I face the threat of having to park in that in my backyard. And, you know, if the law says no, I'm I'm for the law, you could say.
Okay, and I don't mean to call off this meeting, but then I have one more. So vegetation?
I, that's not true.
Vegetative screening, vegetative screening. Uh, I've got pictures, it was, and it's on the site plan, and she has removed the vegetative screening. I've got pictures of her bulldozers removing the vegetative screening.
Vegetation, I have done lawn maintenance. Everyone's allowed to maintain. In fact, I had to call the police to remove Ms. Schoffler from my property while I had
I I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Excuse me, I'm also a neighbor. I'm Ivy Steel. I live in the property next to Nancy's also back, and I also saw the removal of the vegetation. So Ms. Adler isn't being honest about what they did at the property.
I disagree.
I'd like, I'd like to jump in. Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry. I need to jump in for a second. Guys, it's very hard to run these meetings over Zoom. We can't, we're not, for, again, we're not a legislative body, and it sounds like there's a lot of conversations that need to be had. But I'd like to take a moment to turn it back over to the chair and the vice chair so that we can get a point of order. Because we need, I I know, I understand this is contentious, but we all need to, we can't all be talking over each other. It's there, there, let 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 Peter, let Stuart lead the meeting. We and and, you know, there, and just, I I know this is a little bit remedial, but you can, if you go over to the bottom of your screen, you can raise your hand uh, in in a window that the operator will see. So let's just try to keep it a little bit more between the lines here. I'm sorry. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Connor. Thank you, Connor. Uh, so ladies and gentlemen, we seem to have a legal issue here that we can't solve at this moment. I would like to refer to Stuart. Uh, do you agree that uh, we should turn this back to the CEO to get uh, guidance?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so folks, we're gonna end this, uh, and we are going, the planning board is going to get uh, guidance from the zoning enforcement officer, and then we will get back to you all with that.
We should make a motion to table the public hearing. Let's make it official.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make that motion to uh, to temporarily uh, to adjourn the public hearing, right? We're adjourning, we're not closing, we're just adjourning for the moment.
Before we do that, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
So uh, I'm Stuart Lipkin, I'm the vice chairman of of the planning board, and I appreciate everybody's perspectives here. From my own perspective, I'm not particularly interested in what somebody's motivation is for uh, challenging an application or raising issues in respect to an application. Doesn't really change um, our responsibility as far as I'm concerned, one bit. We still have to make a uh, a proper determination whether the application is sound and appropriate under the criteria that are put upon us by the relevant parts of the code. But that said, I think um, board member Brian Ormeo may have raised an interesting question because I started hearing for the first time about vegetative screening and some of the issues that have caused strife between this Schlafer and and the owner of the subject property. And I'm wondering if um, the those parties might consider, you know, if 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 the adjoining property owner that's bringing this challenge, uh, if there are any measures that might be instituted uh, that would um, solve the issues that she has currently and might lead to withdrawal of the of the challenge. Um, I can't answer that, but since Ms. Adler is on the line and the app, the uh, client of Wayne is on the line, Nancy, Ms. Schlafer, right?
Schlafer, yes.
A little slow with the names, but um, perhaps you you could uh, consider that offline and and uh, if there's any way that you might be able to come up with measures that the owner could institute to um, uh, bring this matter to a peaceful resolution without, you know, further dispute, that would be to everybody's benefit. I'm not suggesting that if you do or don't do that, it's not going to affect how I view the application, but um, I think Brian's questioning raised that issue and that possibility. So it's always a good idea, if there is any way that uh, something concrete could be done and way of screening off, you know, the the light or whatever the issues might be, to bring about some uh, resolution between you, then I'm all for that. That's my only comment at this point.
Very good.
Okay. I'm on it. Um, is there anything I can do to resolve the situation?
Who's that?
Well, as Stuart said, um, perhaps try to work something out.
I think you'd have to ask that question to uh, uh
Why would we have to discuss it? I I'm Nancy Adler, maybe I could talk to, I don't know, know if I could, maybe somebody could talk to Nancy Schoffler.
Nancy, she's addressing you.
Right, we're we're gonna adjourn this to the call of the chair. The 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 main issue with the lawyer has brought up is whether legality of it, and the other issues about screening and parking, we can deal with in a site plan review. But right now, we're stuck over a legal question, which we can't resolve at this second.
I will, I will get a memo out to zoning enforcement officer next week, asking for some clarification and get back to you.
Okay, so have we voted to adjourn it, subject to the call of the chair, the hearing?
I raised then, so yeah.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, folks, I hope we work this out.
Thank you.
All right. So
May I suggest in the future that the audience be muted? They were allowed to come in and jump in and talk over each other, and that's not a way to do this. They have to be set up muted and not able to unmute themselves unless the chair or the host calls upon them.
I want you to know that in every Zoom invite I send, I say, keep yourself muted until you hear public to be heard. So I try, Dudy, I try, and if I
I'm just saying there's a way to enforce it, which is to not let them unmute themselves.
If the only thing with that, I think, is it can be difficult um, with the board members. So if, I think what happened there is if we do that, then the board members also can't unmute themselves.
They can be asked to, and then if they don't mute themselves again, they'll stay unmuted.
Well, you know, just 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 saying that that was, I think, one of the only hangups I remember.
Yeah.
All right, folks.
Not what we were doing yet, and now we do.
Okay, I'd like to move on um, to the main issue we have tonight, which is um, the comprehensive review regarding critical environmental areas. And I want to thank Melissa for bringing everybody together here tonight that's interested in this, the uh, NRI, the WEC, and the Woodstock Land Conservancy, folks. The Woodstock Planning Board right now is in the process of reviewing and updating the comprehensive plan, which is adopted in 2018. In that plan, uh, part four, under how do we get there, scenic and natural resources, says, according to the Woodstock Comprehensive Plan Community Survey, natural resource presentation, preservation, and protection is the overwhelming priority of the town's residents. Specific recommendations include strengthening our conservation activities. And they go on to say the town should build upon the strategic conservation plan, Woodstock Land Conservancy, by creating a land and water conservation action program, um, utilizing other planning resources, including but not limited to the Woodstock inventory, which is created for the comprehensive plan, and other references. So the priorities should align with the Woodstock Land Conservancy's conservation targets and focus on creating an interconnecting network of the town's water resources, scenic landscapes, important forest areas, natural habitats, and community connections, including trails, public access, where appropriate. Now, that's directly out of the comp plan. So the, the, I took a course, which was the the New York State uh, Planning Federation course. And in that course, they uh, indicate that one of the duties of the planning board is to conduct ongoing reviews of the comprehensive plan and present proposed changes to the town board. As part of the application process, the town, the planning board does, for subdivisions, special use permits, and site plan reviews, a question on the environmental impact statement asks if the proposed action is in concert with the comprehensive plan, specifically whether areas of land conservation, wildlife corridors, and critical environmental areas are to be identified. However, if conservation areas are not listed in the comprehensive plan, then the applicant may continue without further review. The put with the planning board workshop, which is coming up on April 29th, was going to be dedicated to the review of the critical environmental areas. Subsequent reviews, by the way, in workshops, will be of the water aquifer and wellhead protection, which is uh, on our list, and the build out analysis as they relate to affordable or workforce housing. And in respect to the build out analysis, the existing number of possible lots that can be developed does not account for the exclusion of areas that would meet critical environmental area criteria. So the build out analysis would need to be reviewed with that criteria in mind. So for critical environmental areas, we are considering creating yet another district, similar to that of the scenic overlay or the gateway district. These districts would consist of natural features, including wetlands, watercourses, their buffers, wildlife corridors, conservation areas, et cetera. Regarding such criteria, the planning board would appreciate the input and suggestions from all of you. Needing to address, we need to address the what, why, how, where should critical environmental area districts be composed of, and what restrictions and or review should be associated with these areas. Along the layers, along with these layers that Hazonia created, uh, the national, the NRI uh, has compiled a list of land formation and biodiversity areas. The hope is that planning board member Judith Kerman and Ingrid Heckel of the DEC could create a map incorporating these layers. It would then be used as a guide for establishing CEA areas. This this has come to our This has come to our attention because in New Poles, halfway through a review of a major project, after all the engineering and reviewing was done, it was brought up that there were environmental issues. So the idea is to avoid interruption and confusion. We would like to instead be proactive and establish these areas before their development comes before the Planning Board. So at this point, the main discussion would be about the objective of creating critical environmental areas in town. And next would be the how, where, why, and restrictions in those areas. Hopefully, by the end of the workshop meeting, we would have a drafted proposal to present to the Town Board. So I'd like to start with Ingrid. She's certainly the one that knows most about it. And could you kind of give the Planning Board ideas of how we should go about this?
Peter and members of the Planning Board and others who are here tonight, my name is Ingrid Heckle, and I work for the Hudson River Estuary Program at the DEC through a partnership with Cornell. So there's, I think there are kind of two different things here. You know, there's, critical environmental areas are defined in New York State SEACER regulations, and they have a specific role during SEACER. There is a question on the EAF forums about whether a project is in or adjacent to a CEA. And if so, that CEA becomes an area of consideration for the lead agency in determining potential impacts and the significant determination of significance in the project. But from what Peter described, it sounds like you're also thinking about this a little bit more broadly in terms of the potential establishment of a conservation overlay zone type of zoning tool, which would have a broader, it would be more of a regulatory tool. The CEA designation in itself through SEACER, while it does ensure that there is consideration of impacts to that, those features during environmental reviews, it doesn't, it doesn't regulate land use in those areas or restrict development in any way. It, it just makes sure that that potential impacts to the qualities or of the resource in that area are taken into account during SEACER. So the, you're kind of talking about critical environmental areas, though, like I said, in the broader context of perhaps a conservation overlay zone, which could have specific regulations attached to it that might relate to how the project is reviewed, might limit particular uses or density in addition to the regulations in the underlying district. And as you said, you already have an example of that with your scenic overlay zone. But these types of overlay zones are also used to regulate other types of environmental features. They could be designated for related to steep slopes or habitat areas, areas that have known high biodiversity and so forth. So I think the, the question, it's, it sounds like you're interested in pursuing this more in the context of the latter. And so the, the approach to going, well, you're focused on the objectives tonight. And I think, before you get to the objectives, I think you kind of have to define the resources in particular that you're concerned about and that you want to focus on, on whether it's a habitat-related resource or a water resource. And the objective of the zoning will depend on what you're trying to protect. So that, that's, that's my initial comment. I'm not sure you have any follow-up question or clarification. Judy?
The Board members, if they have questions.
Yeah, a comment, really. We found out very recently about the importance of this when it came to that property on Chestnut Hill Road near Witch Tree. The fact that we had rather stringent wetlands rules made a huge difference in the way that that property was developed or is going to be developed. One of the people who has to know that, before she sends them to us for a special use permit, is of course the zoning officer. And we have seen what happens when things like the scenic overlay are not applied to an application in a timely way. So this really needs to involve communication among all of us. I've got that map, it is trimmed down to Woodstock and the watersheds that feed the Woodstock streams. So it's very manageable, we can apply it anytime we're looking at a case. And, but I, I think we are, Ingrid, I think we are thinking about what we need to protect. In the way that we are now protecting water, water resources, we need to be protecting other kinds of things. High-quality dense forests, for example. But we need to recognize that there will be people who own property who consider something like that taking. I think that's the legal term. So we need to be alert.
I think a starting point is to think about what sorts of resources or situations are not being, getting addressed through the current zoning. And you do have a, I think, well, in my opinion, quite a strong wetlands law in Woodstock. And so that's providing a certain level of protection, especially around water resources. But it, I don't know if through the Planning Board's experience, if there have been other types of resources that you've, that you're concerned about, that you feel the zoning is not addressing directly currently.
Right, well, I mean, specifically, it would be in subdivisions, which we're getting down to finite amount of land to be subdivided. And some of these big subdivisions are going to come before us. And under current, current zoning, if, if it can be divided into three-acre or five-acre parcels, that's what the developer's going to do. And unless there are wetlands or something that are already on the site, we have no other way to preserve the area, to, to extend beyond the code, which is the acreage of the lot.
And the, and septic, and a few other, and the width of driveways. But it's pretty, it's a pretty limited resource that we have to protect that property.
And does the town have, are there conservation subdivision regulations or some sort of clustering requirement like that?
Oh, there's no requirement other than staying out of the wells and the wetland buffers and the stream and the stream buffers. And of course, we have steep slopes and then a scenic overlay, which is mostly a visual regulation, more than the protection of, of the environment. But the real question is, for instance, in, in New Poles, they were, they were trying to deal with how much area to put into a conservation area or a critical environmental area. And then, once you decide what should be in those areas, what would be the regulations that would apply to that? And, you know, we're kind of looking at it now with the wellhead protection. The town's trying to create an aquifer protection and wellhead protection. And then the idea is, well, what can or not, can you or not do in that area? But in this case, it's a question of, if we look at what's remaining in the build-out analysis, they've included areas that can be built out that I think we really need to look at conserving. And it is now, now, because it'll be, if, if the subdivision comes before us and we don't have any district to apply, then we have no way to restrict anything.
I see. Yeah, so there's, there, well, there are a number of different, there are different approaches. I mean, there's one, one thing to look into would be some kind of conservation subdivision regulations, which could be adopted into the subdivision regulations. They, they could be optional. You could use a critical environmental area or other kind of conservation overlay zone to specify where they may be mandatory or where there's a specific review, review process used to determine if they're, if a conservation design would be required. There's examples of that. I know in, in the town of Warwick, their biodiversity conservation overlay zone relates to both the habitat assessment procedure and to the application of their sub, conservation subdivision regulations. So that might be one approach to look into.
Is that an area that they have described? And then anything within that area falls under certain regulations?
Yeah. Yeah, so they, and they, they define those areas based on a conservation plan that was developed for that area back 15 years ago, maybe. And it came up with kind of the outline of what became this overlay zone, which were the, basically the larger intact natural areas remaining in the community that. And, and so it, it kicks in, I think, for, for major subdivisions, a review process with the Planning Board to determine whether a habitat assessment should be completed. And then I think, I'm actually not sure offhand right now if, if it requires the use of a conservation subdivision or not. But, and then for minor subdivisions, following a conventional layout, I think it also then kicks in those regulations as well. I know in the town of Rhinebeck, which we, we've highlighted the use of a natural resource checklist that they have that's built into their zoning regulations for, or their subdivision regulations. They use pre-application meetings to go through, basically, their, their equivalent of a natural resource inventory, you know, look, look at the, the different natural resources that are present on the property. And on the basis of that, the Planning Board determines whether to require a conservation subdivision layout versus a conventional layout. So, but they do that very early on before the applicant has submitted anything formally.
Let me ask members of either, either Julia or other members of the WEC, what areas of town do you think need protection more than that we have now?
I, well, we have the deeply forested areas. I would hope that those could be protected in some way. Certainly, the, the wetlands, but there is the very robust wetlands and water car, watercourse law, so that is already extent. We probably, as a, as a group, should, the WEC should take a look at this and discuss it among ourselves and come back to you with a recommendation that really would make most sense, wouldn't you say, Alex?
Okay, yeah, I know that Ingrid, in the past, has brought up the idea of wildlife corridors. That's basically, we have a wetland and it's protected and the buffer is protected, but maybe six, 800 feet away, there's another wetland and the land between them
Yeah.
needs protection for, you know, for wildlife corridors to, to move about.
I think there's something to be said, too. I mean, similarly, that, you know, ecological areas are good on their own, but they're better contiguous, so figuring out a way to preserve some of that, you know, instead of having like a plot, plot, a plot, a plot. It has the corridor, it has, you know, it has corridors for not just animals, but the forest is stronger, it keeps the invasive species out a lot more easily if there's a cluster. So it benefits a lot of things to have, to have that. But I think, Julia, we should, we can get back to you guys if we, you know, once we discuss it amongst ourselves a bit as well. We could give some recommendations, and Max, you know, Max might have some, too.
And I, I would offer, I'm, I mean, I'm sure the Land Conservancy would be happy to help out, too. I mean, Woodstock, I think, has a lot of great resources in reports and studies. Much of Ingrid's tromping around the, the town. But, you know, the Hudsonia study, WLC has a strategic conservation plan. And then in 2018, worked with Hudsonia, looking at our service area, which is larger than Woodstock, but looking at how do climate change impacts, affect choices that one might make in, in what you're conserving. And, and really, what we came up with is, you know, the balance of, of, of conserving different ecosystems from the mountain tops down to some of the valleys and like moving in towards West Sagrades and, and more fertile lands of farming. I think, you know, someone mentioned at the outset of tonight's meeting, I think there's two working farms, you know, currently. You know, are there other opportunities for, for other agricultural lands to be saved? As we all know, we, you know, we're pretty heavily forested and not, you know, not that many open meadows, you know, at this point, or agricultural land. But anyway, and then looking what Alex was just talking about, the connectivity between parcels that are already conserved. I mean, you know, there's a lot that has been done here. I think in looking at the quality of the Sawkill, you know, we don't, the, the municipal area, there, there are tests done on the Sawkill, but other than that, you know, how do you protect the quality of that stream in a variety of ways? And I think that's, that's also something worth discussing. But there are these reports, I think they're, some of them on the town website, that, that would be helpful, I think, in, in helping you all think about that as well.
Watercourses are, of course, very, very critical. They feed the streams and they feed the aquifer, and they're not all that well-protected. The reason it becomes a major issue right now is because Woodstock is experiencing some pretty serious growth and going into places where people didn't use to go before because of the cost of roads or, or putting in septic systems. And today, they can overcome those obstacles and build about anywhere. And we're seeing a lot of it going into the mountains and going into areas that have been undeveloped for quite a while. So.
Well, and Peter, with that, I think it's not even that they're not prohibited. It's people seem to be, I mean, I don't know how flagrant it is, but there are people doing things that it's, it's not appropriate and it is regulated that they are not to do what they do. They just go and, and do these things. So that's a problem, too, is the, you know, just being an eye on all corners of the town, you know, with, with what's happening. So, yeah, it's, it's a problem.
Well, hopefully, if we can create these areas, then we would have some more control over it. You know, right now, there's not a lot of control other than the watercourses and wetlands that we can do as far as limiting development. So, yeah.
I want to ask Ingrid, when you do the presentation in, in April.
March, right.
Oh, the end of March, right. It's this month?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've got the maps that you guys created, and we've got them trimmed down to Woodstock, so we know what we're looking at. I think that the WEC and maybe the Land Conservancy ought to study them in a, in a dynamic setting, which is to say, not just on a piece of paper, but being able to turn on and off things and see how they combine with each other. I'm available, I'm willing to do that. It's an easy thing to set up a Zoom meeting to do that. I don't know when would be the right time to do that. And Ingrid has a better idea of what she's planning to present. But I just wanted to mention that that's what those maps are for.
I would say specifically, Ingrid, if you could help us with any ideas about wildlife corridors. It seemed like when we were developing the NRI, you had some opinions about that and you and your team did, that I think that could help us a lot.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to arrange another meeting where we could look more closely at some of those different map layers and talk about them. You know, the, you're referencing the webinar planned for March 23rd, which will actually be presented by Gretchen Stevens from Hudsonia. And, and then she's going to be interviewing, kind of having conversation with two representatives from towns that have these types of areas already designated. I've alluded, we're about to release an, an application for technical assistance as well that for communities to. for communities to go through a process, probably five or six months, meeting monthly to come up with a delineation of a proposed critical environmental area. So that's something I would encourage you to think about applying for. That would be technical assistance from Hudsonia and and probably from myself and or a colleague at the estuary program. In addition to that, you might also consider the Hudson River Estuary Grants that were just announced. Because our stewardship planning grants can be used for funding projects, including the development of conservation overlay zones. And so that would be a funding source that you could use to also get hire an attorney to work with you on on zoning language, for example. That's something to consider. That, you know, there could be different parts of that project. There might be a component with delineating the areas in a more fine-tuned way. Working with a planner or consultant and then having an attorney work on possible language.
I think, Ingrid, could I just mention on on those programs, though, I think the estuary, I think that the applicant, if it's it's awarded, has to fund it and then gets reimbursement afterwards, I think. No?
For the
So that the entity would have to outlay the money or whatever. And 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 so the the, you know, there would have to be the ability to do that, I think.
That's something to look into because I know they can do cash, they can do cash advances on those grants. But if you, you know, specific questions, you can reach out to our grants administrator. And then another possibility might be just working on an open space plan, which would be a little bit broader thinking about different strategies to address open space conservation in the community. And part of that could include development of conservation overlay zoning, but it it could also include other strategies, a range of strategies.
And it sounds like the folks in Warwick, you know, I've seen, I know I've seen them speak on 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 issue, but sounds like the folks in Warwick might be worth also consulting, you know, for the planning board.
Yeah, definitely, because that those that they've had that zoning for at least a decade now. I believe. So they have a lot of experience with it.
Excellent. Well, like I said, you know, we have these layers that Judith has on available different layers that are environmental areas, either heavy forest or so on and so forth. But I'd certainly like to ask the W E C and the and the N R I group to put together what they think is what we need. What's the criteria to create these areas? What's the most important thing that we're trying to preserve in limited areas? Because we obviously can't blanket the whole town. So we're we're gonna have to pick areas that we feel deserve extra scrutiny during development.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Julia.
Yeah, the object, the objective here seems to me to be able to fine tune our toolkit and to make sure that when problems arise that we have the the tools we need to address things appropriately.
Which we don't now, you know, on the planning board, if we review a a big subdivision, there's really nothing to that we can use other than, you know, the the wetland. But other than that, we have no tool to to ask for conservation zones or 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 anything to protect larger areas. So, go ahead.
You mentioned the twenty third of March. I don't have any information about that. What is that?
I can send it to you.
I sent an email also.
You did? No, I didn't.
Peter knows. Help me out, planning board. But I can send it again.
Please.
Go ahead.
Peter, can I, I have a question for Ingrid. Now, what am I, I'm blanking on my question. All right, sorry, I'll I'll remember in a minute. Sorry.
I have one more thing to say, which, well, just going back to the to planning, you know, we're we're big proponents of planning. In part to to kind of build the community support behind your, whatever you're trying to do and engage the community in the process. And so that that, you know, that it may be advantageous to think about an open space plan as an opportunity to engage the community in a discussion about which are the, you know, which areas people are really concerned about and care about and think are worthy of protection. So that what you end up proposing will may have more strong support. But it it kind of depends on how, where, you know, your gauge of where you think the public is at this point. You know, I I think there would be many benefits to undertaking a planning process like that, but you may also feel like you have enough support and you've done enough planning with your recent comp plan to move forward at this point.
And any other towns that you've mentioned that have something similar already adopted would be good for us to look at and and see how they're doing it.
And I also think with COVID, things have changed so much for people in the last year and 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 if anything more, I think for a lot of people, the value of of the natural resources have been so significant. But what I was gonna ask Ingrid is, when a town is contemplating these things, is it is it sometimes that they do a step to do a moratorium on on development? I mean, what, how does that work? Is that helpful?
I haven't seen that happen in in this sort of circumstance. But, yeah. So, no, I mean, I've I've heard of that more recently with with solar development. Usually, it's in response to some, you know, something that's perceived as a real pressing threat that needs to be addressed or not necessarily a threat, but just there's like a big change in land use and there's a realization that the current zoning isn't adequate. So again, that's that's all.
All right, well, I certainly, speaking for the board, appreciate all your input. And I look forward to getting some more ideas from you all. As I said, it's, we would like to be proactive and get something in place over the next year or so before before it's too late. As I said, development is happening fairly quickly now. And the it's, you know, it's, 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 it's never too late to to do it. I'm talking in relation to the buildout analysis, actually. There's a finite number of building sites left in this town. It's an actual number that the comp plan came up with, like fourteen hundred. And they got that number by taking out wetlands. But I don't know if they took out Hudsonia wetlands, they may have only taken out state wetlands, some steep slopes. I don't know all what they took out of the possible developed areas. But it it's a finite number. And I think Sorry, Julia.
You're gonna develop a map of those, is that right, or?
I, yeah, that would be the plan, to develop an actual ma- map, creating these areas, yes. That would be the idea, so that when we look at subdivisions or site plans, we can we can use these protections and apply them. Because, as I say, it's a finite situation. We've only got so many building lots left. And and so much needs to be protected. So I really hope you all can keep going with this. As I say, the our workshop meeting, we would hope by then maybe to put together a proposal to adjust the comp plan and present it to the town board. The town board has to actually make the the changes to the comp plan. So our job is just to present the idea to them. So if you're all on board with that, then our workshop meeting, you're all welcome to see if we can get something in in writing to give to the town board.
Great.
Okay, folks?
Twenty ninth, right? That was
Yep, the twenty ninth.
Um, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
About the buildout, I noticed when I was cleaning up some of my files that at one point I was involved in helping you with that. And then when it went into the comp plan, I guess it went elsewhere. If 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 there is a map anywhere that shows which lots we think are developable, developable there, where to add that to the map that we are maintaining that has the Hudsonia and N R I information on it would be very useful. I don't know if Jerry, Jerry involved in this, because he would, he would have done that if, or he would have been able to do that.
I think we would have to contact the the group that actually did the comp plan for their works, worksheets, because they, somebody figured out what lots could be developed and which couldn't.
Well, my suggestion would be, since I've got all this in one place, if I got that work information identified, I assume these are existing tax parcels.
I think Sarah Toga Sozias is the one that actually came up with that, so. Yeah, they're tax parcels. But I think they're they're you know, when you look at a parcel, it's a hundred acres. How many lots can you put in it? We have some coming before us soon.
Did they calculate that? They looked at particular parcels and calculated what they were capable of?
The report says they excluded areas that couldn't be developed, but I don't know to what extent.
Well, my suggestion would be, and I'm willing to do the work to make that part of the mapping materials that we have, but I need the information.
Okay, we'll see if we can search it up and get the get the lots that they, you know, they looked at being developable.
Okay, start to start, however many there are.
Mm hmm, mm hmm, good idea. But is anybody
If I do nothing but identify that lot and say, we think you could put five, you know, five building lots on this, we could get a pretty good picture of what the whole thing looks like compared to the materials that Hudsonia and D E C put together.
Good start, good start. Does anybody else have any input on this? Because we do have some resolutions to attend to here. Everybody else good? John, you got something?
Well, Peter, the only, my only problem with that is that we sound like we're giving the developers a sketch plan.
That's, that's unfortunately a good point. Yeah. Well, good point there. We gotta keep one step ahead of them.
That's why I use the term taking. Because if we do, if we pass rules, laws, that don't allow them to do things they think they wanted to do, we may have some interesting legal situations. Am I right, Stuart?
He might be there, he might not. I mean, you know, to give an example of it, when Riverby was developed years and years ago, they actually made green belts around all the lots. And they made, they actually built into the subdivision all these green belted areas on their own. They did that, Jerry Wapner actually presented that. But the, but there wasn't anything that the town could ask them to do. They just did it on their own to to make better lots, but but it's that sort of Yeah, John?
How many developers of Jerry Wapner's you know, integrity would you think you're gonna find?
Yeah. Not now.
Yes, that's my concern.
Not now. I mean, you know, they, 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 you know, they try to use every inch. So, all right, well, we do have some resolutions to take care of, so unless anybody has anything else on this, I'd like to move on to the next stage of our meeting.
I was muted when you asked me that question, so you didn't hear my answer, but I agreed with you as always.
Follow up with some some examples of of these different code from different towns that I mentioned, and I'm I'm happy to meet again and discuss this further.
Great, Ingrid, really appreciate it. And yeah, anything that you can show us that somebody else has already stumbled along with would help. You know?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys, for doing this. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, unfinished business. If Stuart is still with us here, we're, obviously, we're not gonna do one oh five, one oh nine, that's for sure.
Oh, we're not.
But Stuart, could you make a motion to adopt a resolution for here, Arlene and Lederman and Edward Friedman?
So I'll make a motion that the planning board adopted their resolution as drafted in S U P number twenty one dash oh five eight two for Arlene Lederman and Edward Friedman.
All favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve credits for James Conrad for depending for attending the N Y P F webinar. And Brian, for attending the same or different one, he he did the comprehensive one. So can we make a motion to give these guys their credits?
So moved.
All favor?
Aye. Aye.
And now Melissa's turn.
Hey.
S T Rs.
Planning Board makes a motion to adopt the draft resolutions for S T R cases. S U P number twenty dash zero five six four, John Charles and Amy Margaret Keeler. S U P number twenty dash zero five six five, Nuno and Nicola Fernandez. S U P number twenty one dash zero five eight three, Alexander Stanton. S U P twenty one dash zero five eight four, Stephanie Grill. S U P number twenty one dash zero five eight five, Jay Leaf and Joan Salwen Fields. S U P number twenty one dash zero five eight six, David A. Young and Paul W. Roberts. S U P twenty one dash zero five eight seven, Gerald Gerald Herman. S U P number twenty one zero three two three A, Paul Murray. S U P number twenty one zero five eight nine, Sandra Weider Cohen and Alan N. Cohen. And S U P twenty one dash zero five nine zero, Richard and Victoria Ta.
So moved.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Melissa.
All right. Lucky night.
Okay, any members of the board have any questions or discussions or issues?
Gotta do my minutes.
What's that?
You gotta do my minutes.
Minutes.
Oh, the minutes. Yes, sorry. The minutes for for February eighteenth.
Move to accept.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to thank Melissa for the sterling work when it comes to getting these minutes done quickly.
Yeah.
Here, here.
You're gonna make me cry.
Here, here.
I adore each and every one of you, and I commend you all for what you do for this town.
Can we have a pay raise next year, please?
You know what? Or soon.
Yeah, give John one next year.
Raving recommendations, please. Thank you so much, guys. You all are such a pleasure to work with.
Vice versa.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn unless anybody else has anything to add.
So moved.
All favor?
Thanks, guys.
All right, folks.
Aye.
Stay out of the wind.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Take care, guys. Thanks, Melissa.
Crashed in my driveway yesterday, so.
That sounds like fun.
It was a transformer crash right on the on the driveway. They had to dig the whole driveway up for remediation and
So you you also have a lot of sawed up limbs in your driveway.
I do right now.
Yeah, we have a few of those.
Eat any kindling wood?
We lost power three times.
All right, gentlemen and ladies, and Melissa.
Thanks for keeping us abreast of current events.
See you, guys.
John, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave the meeting.
Oh, my God, I'm gonna